You ready?
I'm good.
All right. All right, I'd like to call the April sixteenth Windsor Township Planning Commission meeting to order. Have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes.
I'll make that motion.
First in a second. All in favor? Approval of the minutes from December twentieth, twenty twenty four. I'll take a notes. Secretary Farming laws.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Second. First in a second, all in favor? Any public comments this evening?
No one on the side of the sheet.
No one on the side of the sheet, all right, great. Moving on to old business, Mountain Trail Solar LLC, conditional use hearings on four thirty at six P M. Anything else to report?
Mountain Trail.
Okay, Ron's Construction, the H and K Group's side plan. I have to report there as well. And then the Snyder subdivision.
Is he building over there already or is he moving or?
He's going to?
Yeah.
Once he's even below two million dollars?
Yeah.
All right, then moving on to new business. South Schuylkill Property Group LLC self storage facility, special exception results.
Let me see what we got it. I believe I've seen it before.
I've seen it before.
There's nothing depending before it is.
So the next step in that process, did they come back here for conditional use then or? They've been granted that now or will it be the next step?
No, we're just manning all the planning.
Yeah. And then Station Pass LLC special exception results.
It's a mess. That is, that is an accurate description. So essentially, they, they realize that they dial the wrong thing. And so they actually are going to continue their conditional use. So they can, they continue the variance hearing indefinitely. So there's, there's really nothing to report.
That's.
Blue hammering.
Blue hammering. Blue hammering.
Where did they file correctly, like this guy's been coming to meetings for like two years. Did he start the process recently wrong or from the beginning?
No, 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 that, they, they may need a variance, but they also are going to need additional conditional use approval. He's trying, he's going to be attempting to suggest that he's doing a residential conversion of the units from two or three units.
Trying to base single family housing to two or three units.
Right, which.
Which under the condition of use.
Which under the ordinance requires conditional use approval. So I think that they want to do that piece first before they go forward with the variance.
Cool. All right, there's no other new business, we're gonna move on to Planning Commission concerns. And we're gonna talk about the solar farm ordinance. Is there anything else that we want to talk about as far as Planning Commission concerns other than ordinance? There are a tremendous amount of trees hanging over Fort Clinton Avenue. I don't know that we have any bearing on that, but they're like hanging on the wires, which I know this is like an ongoing problem, but I guess it kind of is what it is until it falls on the road, right? That's.
Until, until it actually damages something.
damages something.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
And then usually you have to get, get the state senator involved.
Yep, yeah. It's crazy. Okay, cool, well, let's get into this thing.
Okay, so like I said a moment before the meeting was started, what I handed each of you is just physical copies of what was sent out to you in the middle of last week. First item is a document final specifications to be specified by the planning commission. And that would basically be our checklist for hammering this final draft out and crossing all the Ts. The second item in that was the, you know, basically to the final draft of the ordinance. Again, with some items that be plugged in based on our discussions this evening. And then the last item was a response letter from the Berks County Planning Commission dated in March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, in response to what we submitted to them. And as you know, we had sent, you know, the draft of the ordinance that we discussed, you know, at the last meeting and a list of items for them to address, a decent amount of which they have in some capacity. So, you know, what I did was on this final specifications document, at the top, I just have a definitions item to address. And then after that, basically, there are numbered items that correspond to the numbers in the letter that we got back from the county planning commission. So the idea is we can kind of run down a list and hammer everything out one by one.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay. So the first item of the final specifications is with regards to the current definitions for solar energy systems in our ordinance. There was a concern raised in regards to how our current definitions read that it's kind of, not ambiguous, but it, it's kind of hard to draw a line between what type of project we fall into. Accessory versus commercial. And there's an open question as far as whether like developer tries to say, oh, well, this is a utility scale or, you know, some type of scale that doesn't otherwise fit into the categories that we define in our ordinance. So one thing that the county planning commission had done is they basically distinguished between accessory and commercial energy systems based on the output. So like accessory would have a cap of ten kilowatts and then commercial has a floor of ten kilowatts. The idea being whatever sort of solar project that grows, whether its primary purpose is for powering something on site or whether it's going for offsite, it's gonna fall into either accessory or commercial.
So I think if I remember correctly, one of the distinguishing facts was that you wanted to separate industrial use as well, isn't that what you mentioned?
Can you think of the industrial and utility kind of now following the commercial?
Well, that should be the general sense.
Yeah.
You just have residential or commercial, right?
You don't need to.
There's no, yeah, I don't know.
Separate it by the potential.
Yeah. We don't need to get into it, it's residential or it's commercial.
Okay.
That's gonna be, that's black and white.
Now, I did, I did make a notation that the, you know, county planning commission added that there was no cap on the wattage for these fountain arrays, which I thought was kind of interesting. It's made you have a big enough building, it could be wide as some of the ground now is it wants, so I didn't put that cap in here.
That's set by building code.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there's a, there's a building code standard here that we adopted that sets that for roof loads.
Understood, okay. Okay. Are there any questions on how we kind of have the proposed definitions altered? And again, the whole language is what, is what has been added to reflect the potential loss for a ceiling.
How many kilowatts is the, is the proposed four hundred acres of somebody?
We don't see that.
Do you know what it is?
Not off the top of my head, but.
Ten watts.
Ten watts.
Yeah. Oh, others.
That's pretty crazy. All right.
So the accessory would be, be either residential or, or.
Like, is it, is it, is that one, is it going to be?
It would be building accessory.
Or a business, you know.
Well, my, my, my.
As long as they don't exceed.
Primarily using it for building use.
Well, and then they, we had the kilowatt being here, so they exceed that, but then they go to building code, so then they need building board appeals to approve. And because you need an engineer to sign off that the weight load can hold what they're trying to do, then we go to commercial energy system, and then we go out with it too. Right, because we're going by the kilowatts.
Seems much simpler.
Maybe it's easier to follow up.
Sounds good.
Okay, so then moving, you know, down a bit like halfway through the page, the next kind of bold and underlined item is just items addressed in the Berks County Planning Commission review letter. So the first item, if you're kind of looking at, you know, final specifications and the March thirteenth letter side by side. Number one is just regards to suggesting that conditional use permit for solar be used in, you know, all zoning districts. I mean, I don't think there's any road restrictions in outright permitted use, I'm pretty sure every one is already conditioned to use, so. Yeah, so that's why I have N A under protocol work, because you don't need to change anything like that. So number two, the county planning commission suggested considering a maximum acreage for these projects by percentage of land, not a number, and or maximum percentage of land area available for clear cutting in these types of projects. So as far as like a guidepost to what is reasonable, at least as far as the acreage percentage, there is. Quarter township in Clinton County, Pennsylvania uses twenty five percent of the total area of the lot for a particular project as its cap. I did not see any sort of number basis for the idea of clear cutting. So it's kind of the first point of discussion. I know one of the items brought up was can you cap these? Well, this other township did, and the county planning commission is saying, yeah, you can do it based on a percentage.
Really, we have that heavily in the county district currently. Get our cap to.
Well, max impervious percentage.
Yeah. We have basically the same thing, right?
Twenty five.
Twenty five? The tree kind of thing intriguing though, so I've been, I've been noticing, because of that lovely state law of timber harvest being permitted everywhere by right, I've been noticing a couple places where they're coming, they need a variance, they decide, no, I'm not gonna do any of the land, they timber harvest it, then they come back and like, you know what I mean?
I think I follow you.
How would you, how, yeah, I, I don't know, I was just thinking, it's one of those things that just happened a long time back, I'm just having like a conversation like, can we really put a thing on tree, tree clearing?
I mean, I've seen some other, you know, townships where they did like a whole sort of tree protection ordinance, and again, there's exceptions out for that for those types of logging that you're talking about.
Yeah. But I just had an attorney at law school submit that that's illegal because of the, the state laws, you know, permitting the tree logging. But I, I, I'll fore, I'll foredo this, I'll foredo this.
Are you, now there, there's this thing between clear cutting versus managed.
Understand, I understand, what, what I'm saying is you, you still put a percentage of trees that can be removed, right? We put a percentage of trees that can be removed, if they go to timber harvest, can we put a percentage of trees that can be removed even if they do a timber harvest and come back later and say, I'm just gonna clear them? You know, I'm, you know what I'm trying to say?
Oh, like they, I see what you're saying.
They use the first law first, they timber harvest, and then they come back and say, now I want to remove twenty five percent of the. Well, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah. So I just wasn't sure if that, because we have the W A C, you know what I mean? And then that needs, that would need to then somehow get transferred on a deed. So say you buy a property, you timber harvest, I buy it, and then I come and want to put solar panels on it, and now I'm going to clear it for twenty five percent. So at what point, at what point is that over with? What's the timeframe where, hey, you clear cut the trees and now it's reset? You know, I don't know, I mean, are we getting into the trees?
Yeah.
Into the weeds.
We might, sorry. I'm, I'm just trying to think and, and I have a developer that just did this, so I'm trying to just kind of put this all out there.
That's good.
I don't, I don't know if we can, I don't know. I'm actually gonna foredo it. See that? All right, moving on to number three, I guess. So everybody, is everybody okay with number two?
Do we need to finish number two?
Are you okay at twenty five percent?
That's all we need now.
But not, that's, that's not where I need clear cutting.
This doesn't change the impervious numbers that we already have in here. Right? Yeah, correct, yes, we're correct. Sorry, I'm just forwarding what you, I think a lot of them have.
So, so I did number three, the county planning, the county planning commission suggested basically provision to provide contact information, you know, for the owner operator. So what I did was I added language into section J one, you can see that in the solar ordinance draft, the beginning of, the bottom of page two. Yeah, yeah, but it starts, it's J sub paragraph one.
Would there be any reason to specify the size of the sign and the half, like, only because I know like your addresses have to be at least four inches tall, or, I mean, there's all kinds of requirements, is that something we should consider or does it not?
Can't hurt. Makes sense. Does anybody know of the baseline that makes sense for that type of sign?
The dotted line? What, what did you say?
So the.
We, we do have a sign ordinance, yes.
So they're, they're, we're gonna require them to have a sign indicating the name, owner operator, and phone numbers at the facility.
Okay.
Should that sign be a certain size?
Well, it should just follow the ordinance.
So that specifies like how big the sign is in the letters.
So the district that it's located in would specify how big were the letters and those, you know, usage is.
Does that only, does that only distinguish how big it can be, or does that distinguish what size it needs to be?
Signs do, yes, size, height, how big, the square footage, how much.
He's talking, he's talking about. I'm saying, can somebody have, like, they don't have the phone calls, can they put a business card on the, on the sign?
Oh, you want like a minimum size?
Yeah, oh. That way they're not calling the township to find out who owns it because they didn't see the sign in the first place, like.
You're saying a minimum size for.
Yeah.
I mean, four, fours.
It seems big.
Four inch letters?
Yeah, but if it's fifty feet from the road, you know, that.
Doesn't have to be fifty feet from the road. They probably put it on the signs, it can be in the.
Yeah, I have it written to be at the, at each ingress and egress point for the facility.
So it should be right there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And how big do you think would be appropriate?
You know, I'm just, I'm just trying, I'm just trying to alleviate the size being too small. So I think that, I mean, two or three inch minimum for a letter, I think, is probably, three inch, three inch probably. Against two big letters. Yeah, you don't want it to be obnoxious, but at the same time, you want to be able to see it from the road if it's mounted to the fence that's, you know, set back pretty far from the road. Is everybody else okay with that?
So the text, yeah, the text is, like, I'm thinking of different prose language, I don't throw it here, it's kind of the end sentence.
Whatever you put there will be more legal than anything we come up with, yes.
Yeah, so, just, can you give me the measurement again, I'm sorry.
Three inch tall letters, I think, would be. Yeah.
Three inch tall one.
Okay, moving on to, well, numbers four and five, I kind of grouped together. And on the final specifications, I have three parentheses there, I don't know why, but it's supposed to be P as in all. But I added language to cover four and five in letter of the ordinance. And basically, both of the comments from the county, what, what, the county planning commission pertains to, basically coordination with emergency services. And then I know in the previous, you know, draft that we had, it was very, had some language in there, so I just grouped it up to the county planning commission's suggestion.
Will you talk about the new access permits?
Uh, that is also in that same subsection here.
Do you need a.
I kept it fairly general, I know they had made it twenty feet cartways between panels. I've had that side plan shown, including means of access to all areas of the commercial solar energy system, which is satisfactory to local emergency service providers.
So we're gonna fire it, you know, so if he says.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if he says it is between feet, it's between feet.
Sure.
Did we ever come up with, do we know if there's anything specifically required for a battery type fire, and then we provide the fire companies with that apparatus?
Um, I mean, we can come up with anything specific that to be put in here, but that's something that you can compose as a condition once they go through conditional use, based on what their submission is, what kind of battery source they're working with. I imagine that will determine what, you know, the, whatever fire company would be responsible for handling that, they would be kind of saying, look, this is the type of methods that we need to use to do this. And we, you know, a condition can be imposed and say, look, you know, our fire company reviewed what you're looking to do, this is how they say this is best addressed. So as a condition, you need to do X, Y, and Z to meet that plan.
Did you see those testicles burning in the middle of the road, the firefighter, you can't put them out, you know, that's probably a problem. Any other suggestions on four and five?
Okay. Okay, so then moving on to, again, I grouped numbers six and seven together, just because they both pertain to screening. And the relevant section in the draft would be paragraph U.
U two.
Oh, U two, that's right. Yeah, and it, yeah, does it base U and U two, U two is pertaining to, just, I added in a little sentence on the end there, because that would mean it's a agreement pertaining to screening. It's gonna include provisions for replacement of any debt screening. And that's pretty cut your eye. But then a kind of overall question for just the base U, are we okay with the parameters that were set in the draft for the screening as far as, like, the fifty feet, the everything trees that, you know, solid they'll grow, or the earth and beam is like, earth and firm, as the alternate? I think those were kind of discussed before, but I genuinely agree for sure. So I thought, well, let's just make sure before I go to those assets.
I think as long as you get the height in there, as long as you get the height, that's the, you know, means we could block the residents that live there and their huge tree farm. We're not putting shrubs that are one foot tall, like if we're going to, they have one foot shrubs. I agree with the eight feet tall trees, or at least a bunch big enough to block the wood.
Maybe replacing them with a big tree.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, that's, that's pretty solid.
What's the, what would be reasonable, where do you consider this, where is reasonable for them to be placed? Allow them to be there, that they have this, you know, this acreage, so that, like, do you get after them as far as not moving the legislation as?
Well, yeah, I mean, if I saw that dead tree, I'd like that.
That's how it.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on to next page, number eight, this is something that hadn't been touched at all, and I'm not even sure if I pronounced this word correctly. Agricultural takes, basically, it's a term of art referring to when you have a solar panel facility and you're allowing like an agricultural use kind of coexisting with it, based on, you know, there's, I guess, there's different types of livestock that can graze amongst the panels and whatnot, same with like the planting plants that can thrive in that sort of, you know, kind of shaded or partially shaded fire. So I don't think that was ever brought up as being something that we were gonna specifically write into there or not. So it's kind of the old discussion is, you know, are we gonna, you know, put something in there specifically allowing it or disallowing it? And if we're gonna allow it, are there any types of, you know, limits as to those types of activities that we would have in commercial solar projects? You'll see, I have a, a couple of paragraphs of language below, and this is like below number three on the page, under this number eight. First one is from Montmore County Pennsylvania, second one is from the county planning commission, and the last one, I think, into vegetarian areas, is also from Ontario County.
So if we don't have anything to address, like what happens if something needs to be raised, she can be. How is that for you?
I wouldn't be able.
It would just be like a farmer in the field.
I mean, I've seen it, I've seen it done, it's not really a problem.
So probably it needs to be, maybe farmers think?
I mean, I guess what, what, from a farmer's perspective, what downside is there? In what, in, in having be there, like, is there any type of animals you think would not be a good fit under the solar panels?
The downside would be size of animal.
Of just destroying the ground or becoming a butt bed?
No, no, as in damaging the panels themselves.
Cow, yeah, yeah.
And sheep, that's why they go to sheep rather than goats, goats, you know, they go to stand on, you know, sheep don't. I, I've seen numerous articles, you know, the last couple of years, that, this, this is a developing thing, yeah, right now.
Yeah, for what it's worth.
To try to maintain, like, land and stuff like that.
Yeah.
Anywhere from they're experimenting with animals, one thing, if you want to do larger animals, the height then of the, the raise would be adjusted so that.
Same. Same then kind of harvesting and, and grass, and you need to have about eight, changing this as well, the consideration.
Oh, and then they're experimenting to what grasses grow best, you know, therefore grazing for. Then another thing I just came across the other, the other week too, is, you know, maybe planting agricultural, and they refer to, you know, some agricultural crops, since you do have a twenty foot, you know, or whatever, at the minimum, and most likely, if you do that, they'd spread the panels farther apart to the company. But that's, I think that's just an experimental stage in what's working, you know, from my perspective, a farmer, you know, it's allowable right now, you know, and it's, I think it's worthy of pursuit, you know, where they have to regulate that.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't necessarily see a downside to it.
Yeah, I mean, and it, it, you know, very well made for so be a, you know, a creature, a creature, you know, of new origin sort of thing. You know, from the Berks County Planning Commission's kind of default, you know, language, it seems like they were incentivizing this type of agricultural activity to basically say, okay, you know, maybe normally you can only use, you can only build your project provided this type of soil on there, it's like, you know, the different classes and whatnot, but if you do these agricultural activities, we'll let you get away with a little bit more because you're having an agricultural use, it's gonna preserve some of the better soil. And, you know, at the end of the day, I'm not saying that, you know, this necessarily, you know, should, you know, go in there right now, it may be something that we wanna just kind of keep in the back of our minds if we ever want to add it at a later time once more, has been seen on it, but I felt.
Yeah, personally, I think that would be cool to have that, I mean, the property is then still being used for agricultural use in addition to the solar panel.
I was thinking about that too, however, what farmer's going, or what business is going to.
Probably not.
In other words, if it's required, and what farmer are you going to get that's saying he's gonna guarantee he's gonna be there for X number of years?
I don't know.
Because he don't know whether it's gonna be profitable or not.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think we're saying there'll be requirement, it's just putting stipulations in, in the event that they did do it, like what animals that are they allowed to put in there? But in the event that they put cows in.
Agricultural, agricultural.
I think we need cows on the farm, and I'm going to tell the cows that this is our cows.
Well, if they do, then they have to fix them based on the rest of the equipment.
Yeah, I just feel like.
And what happens if, since we have cows and solar farm?
Sip it out.
I just feel like this is something that you. I mean, that's the, that's the solar companies, you know, why build, you know, and that's all, you know.
It's something to be visited, you know, if you can think about it more.
Yeah.
So we need this map.
This was mentioned, I thought, like, six months ago by one of the solar projects about.
It's happening.
Yeah.
Yeah, it did come up in the conversation.
I guess it was such a small, yeah, it was a small community solar farm.
They used to use sheep in cemeteries for that reason, that's why the walls were around cemeteries to do a gate, because a sheep would go there, ear on the gravestones, they would have some other grass.
Starting something to apply to the mission.
Actually, some people, some people were making their living all in sheep from one solar plot to the next. And we're starting our solar farm sheep business.
Okay, I will move on from that one.
I'm ready.
Number nine. This is just regarding stormwater, which again, I think would be handled over in development phase anyway, if I'm correct on that. But for what it's worth, I just added a provision to paragraph W of three, on the ordinance, just noting that, you know, that that would be, you know, complied with and that, you know, the techniques and metrics that they plan to use throughout the different phases of construction would be, you know, shown.
Yeah, that's good. That's good, because I'm getting carried up here right now, saying it's required to provide stormwater, I think they get it, it's a hard.
Something else on that, number ten. Prohibition by the type of any equipment associated with the system. This, I just added into paragraph J. This, I just added to paragraph J.
Because you know, once they, you know, they can make money doing this, we've got to have a time...
Like, the billboards and all the fences and everything?
I'm not into it.
It just won't. Yeah, that's good.
The handle of flash or something.
And, uh, number eleven, this is kind of an open one. It contains the paragraph W five, uh, with regards to, uh, the version that we have, um, keeping soil stored on site. Um, and the county, the county planning commission had said, um, about trying to propose some sort of feasible, feasible alternative procedure in the event that some project would not have the practical ability to keep all the soil that they would move on site to be, be put in. Um, I mean, I suppose an alternate could just be if you can't, you know, demonstrated by the applicant that storing all of the soil on site is, you know, impractical or infeasible. Um, you know, satisfactory proof of it being stored offsite, you know, in a manner that's, you know...
Are you still going to make them store it for thirty years? I mean, at that point, I don't think it really matters. If it's not feasible to keep it on the property, then they just go with it. That would be why.
I feel like the size of the, the project versus the size of the land.
It should, it should be feasible.
Right.
It should always be feasible, yeah.
So, is that something they can disallow and move to store offsite?
I mean, but it's only if it's not feasible, so that's going to be asked if it's feasible or not.
You can, yeah, because it's a condition to use, so I think there is...
I mean, they can only do forty-five percent coverage.
Yeah, there are a lot of others.
There are so many other places they can put the soil on the property.
And using the grounds.
Yeah.
Yeah, the grounds could be used with soil.
So, I mean, I guess, certainly we need to put in there in the event that it's not, they can, I mean, dispose of the soil? Or do we just leave it all together because it's unreasonable probably under any circumstance? I mean, at that point, we'll just need to give them variance.
Well, this, this would be a condition to use, I think, the project providing, which just says that this, this requirement can be waived upon a, upon proper shell of the board supervisors. Because the board essentially is sitting with this own work situation.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. That's why, it's like, and like somebody said, like, if you're practically speaking, it's five, it won't happen, but... That was number eleven, right?
Yeah.
All right, uh, number twelve, I added paragraph A one, which is at the beginning of the draft ordinance. Basically, the county planning commission was just saying that, hey, um, the county conservation district requires this pre-application meeting for projects that are, uh, you know, brought up in the, in the area of the district. So, I just added, um, A one, that any commercial solar energy system could coordinate with them, um, follow, you know, proceed with their, uh, pre-app meeting and comply with the rules of proceedings that they follow.
Ooh, that happened like in, in the... They do that? They do that? Ah! The pre-construction meeting happens right after they get approval. And then the conservation issue, they get their approval, they do a pre-meeting before they got any problems.
Mm-hmm.
They have a meeting before they get approved, yeah.
That's good. Moving on to other final items?
Yeah, so these are kind of the more open items that weren't specifically addressed in any way by the county planning commission, but the purposes of hiring out our ordinance should be addressed in some way. The first item, you know, if we comply with the CPI annual basis for, uh, the de-commissioning that's, uh, specified in paragraph O one. And how we had it last, uh, page three near the bottom. Basically, um, the requirement is that a certified professional in the year, um, is retained by the township and paid for by the applicant to estimate the total cost, cost of de-commissioning, um, and to have a, like, admin inflation factor of either five percent, you know, per annum for, um, the CPI of the mid-Atlantic or East region, whichever is greater.
I think it's hard to put, I think it's hard to put a pin on that, but it kind of covers us and what ends. Got the good man ones and hyperinflation, CPI should reflect that, so...
Yeah, and, and to having it be readjusted.
I'm not wishing that on us, I'm just saying, like, five percent is low.
I'm just sort of reacting to the fact there aren't being, you know, hyperinflation.
That's true.
Sort of.
It's very much worse.
It's not the seventies, but it's, you know, it's a goldmine, sure.
But, yeah, I, I think too, I mean, that sort of concern is why we have that, you know, it would be done on an annual basis that it gets recalculated. And based on the recalculation, the applicant, um, you know, would put forward additional security to cover that, just so that the township can, can process.
That's good. The only thing I would have to point out is that who, whose obligation is it to recalculate this? Because I'm going to tell you, just on an administrative level, I don't think that the town, you know, the township is not going to do this. And, you know, and...
Do you, do you leave it up to them? How well is what would be...
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just saying that, like, that this is something that the board, you know, and I'll bring this up with the board as well, that this needs to get on someone's radar, you know, and I don't know if it comes to the zoning officer or, um, who's...
Secretary.
Secretary, you know. It just, from an administrative perspective, I think it needs to be addressed, that, because it should be the township who's following up with it.
Yeah.
Just worried, because we don't, you know, the one thing, if we had staff like, like the borough hamper, I would be more worried about it. But with essentially part-time staff, it's the exception, the roadmaster, I'm worried that it would...
Yeah. Good point.
Otherwise, anything else on that?
So, every, every year, we've been bringing up pivot problems to me, is that?
We're not, we're not, because I've been doing this.
And that's, and that's really the problem, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I just think, I just...
The rolls arounds are fast, on the way.
Right, I assume we need to make sure that administratively that it's someone's job, not everyone's job. So, we actually, that's not...
I mean, so, worst case scenario, this falls into the grade of five years. You can still go back and say the CPI was X, four or five percent, and then just...
Compound.
Compound it, that five years, and now you're caught up. I mean, at that point...
You could.
I mean, that's like worst case scenario.
Yeah.
And then they update them.
But it'd... Call you a...
You're saying, it, it should be a someone's job description?
It should, I just, I, I, I've seen this, I've seen this happen with, um, with letters of credit. Is that, you know, every, those would be that every five years? And usually, it happens sort of, you know, because some, because something else happened, not because someone is being proactive about it.
Right.
And I'm just, I'm just, with this being an annual requirement, I'm, I'm just worried that township is not, doesn't really have a system in place or the manpower in place to monitor this.
Does the, I mean, does the bond work kind of like, I mean, it's kind of like an insurance policy, right? Similar?
Letter of credit?
Yeah, it's similar.
I mean, just because they, I mean, I would assume that the, the person issuing the bond would then be sending us a copy of that every year?
Hmm, not exactly, no.
Trying to liken it to like renters' insurance or something, where I'm notified because I'm kind of a beneficiary of them having the insurance?
So, the, they give us the original letter of credit and put it, you know, but they don't necess, the bank doesn't necessarily reach out to, to say, hey, you can take this.
Okay.
It just sort of sits there.
So, it's time to have the secretary, the township assign to, to, I mean, the annual...
Right, I just want to make sure, you know, it's, it's one thing when you have one project, but if you have three, four, five, six, or seven, it's...
That's not always the one.
Right, it's just something that, I, I think it's an administrative issue that needs to be addressed with the supervisors.
Yeah.
So, moving on, um, to letter O, sub-paragraph three, on the middle of page four. Um, with regards to getting insurance of original liability coverage, um, that arises during the construction operation, de-commissioning of the, uh, commercial solar energy system. I mean, given that, you know, the bond is just for the de-commissioning, um...
I think that's pretty low.
Yeah.
That was the point, is that, is that we, we can be telling it's not enough.
No.
But we don't know what number is. It's a five, it's a five.
I mean, I'd be much happier with five.
I think five is probably...
Five's a waste. Yeah. I mean, we used to make commercial tenants take three million dollars in liability coverage. Just in a little storefront.
I think that's, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
I think that tends too much.
Yeah, they're not going to burn it, they're going to down it.
Uh, okay, in W one, um, there was, you know, one, at some point along the way, um, there was an idea of providing for, um, you know, water testing just, um, to hedge against any potential, um, contaminants of that. Um, the closest I, you know, found for a type of ordinance that would be contained in that, um, was from some bureau. They had an ordinance requiring water testing every three months. There was a change to like a junkyard, uh, so it's a little bit different than something like this. Um, I, I would think that that sort of interval is probably too often for this type of use. Um, created a junkyard where you got cars and potential oil and stuff coming out of them into the ground. And I'd get, the concern is with depending on the type of panel, that something like that can happen. But, um, I'm thinking, you know, that some sort of, um, wire interval would be appropriate, um...
Are you talking about after construction?
Uh, I think you have it as, yeah, during the whole construction existence and de-commissioning that water testing would go on. I suppose, you know, it should probably, like, the operation, you think there's less... I guess I, I personally see the construction and de-commissioning as more volatile events compared to it just existing. So, maybe you're going to be quicker then and, uh, you know, wire during its existence. As far as specific, you know, time.
Unless it was like a, a incident, that everybody uses panels, breakage or something, or something, that you have to check, to speak of it?
Yeah, I suppose you could, you could make creative requirement that if there's an incident, if there's some sort of incident...
Last of a thing.
You know, if there's a fire, if there's, you know, break, you know, breakage of panels, that at that point they have to do some water testing to make sure that there's no reaching into the soil. That makes sense?
Yeah, and time or appropriate editing or whole sort of thing, if that makes sense.
I mean, if we can break it up that during construction and de-commissioning, it's every three months, and then during existence is annually, I think that would be sufficient. And that if you can put a parameter in there that in the event that there is an extenuating circumstance, you know, the borough, the borough within, or the borough, the township within reason can request additional testing to be completed, um, not to exceed every three months maybe? I don't know. Is that, is that reasonable?
I think so.
Yeah.
I had a question, are you requiring, uh, pre-testing, like, before they start the project?
It makes sense for like a control.
Just so like, you know what you're starting with?
Yeah, no, for sure, that makes sense. They probably would do it in their own self-interest.
Are you making that a goal to a certain depth? Are you, are you, what, what, what exactly are you managing?
On any stream located on the premises or any stream within five hundred feet of the site?
Surface water, which is testing surface water?
That's what this is stating.
Okay. What's the name of the chemical? Cadmium telluride?
Cadmium telluride.
So, that, I mean, I think that, well, basically, that's what you're testing for? Yeah, but just ser, making sure we're, we're talking about surface water or are we talking about low water?
I think it's just a surface.
Okay. Just want to be specific, because there's, when I do water testing for, I do junkyards and other things of that nature, you, you gotta be specific where you're sending that to. There's a group that'll do the surface water testing, there's a group that'll do it, and that's the ones I'll send from the DEP. We should just, we should probably specify that and then specify that, that, what's being tested. Surface water runoff. Surface water, well, what are you testing it for? Yeah, you gotta, where, yes. You can't just say I'm going to test this, because it's going to come back with bacteria and all this, and everything of that nature. You gotta be specific what you are. Just like when I have, every well ordinance, it specifically states, um...
So, this says, uh, this says...
It specifically states what you have to test, a well ordinance four.
So, this says shall, this says shall conduct water testing every three months on any stream located on the premises or any stream within five hundred feet of the site. Test samples should be required upstream and downstream of the site, so that the impact of construction, existence, and de-commissioning of the commercial solar energy system can be determined. The samples shall be analyzed by a certified water analysis laboratory for hydrocarbons or other parameters deemed appropriate by the township and shall be provided to the township. If said examples exceed the limits established by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, the commercial solar energy system shall cease operation until such time as the source of the contamination has been identified and corrected in accord with DEP department.
Is cadmium telluride a hydrocarbon?
No.
Look at the chemical.
No, it's not.
So, then maybe we want to specify that as something to be tested for in the mission? Well, specifically, you want to specify, because I get, been in the magistrate or anything of that nature, he's going to say, what are you specifically looking for?
Right.
It's the same thing when I do wells with, some, wells come back with, I mean, everything under the sun. I, I think people shouldn't be drinking out of them, but as long as it doesn't have this certain thing, it is what it is.
Well, the construction and de-commissioning, are we only worried about the stuff coming out of solar panels? Or are you then worried about whatever you're uprooting out of the soil, I mean, at that point?
Yeah, but I mean, you can't really, I mean, at that same point, okay, so every single place that you dig or recultivate or whatever you're going to, it's, no, it doesn't make sense.
Okay.
So, I think it's just...
So, then, does it make sense to make a, a closer interval at the beginning and at the end? I mean, because during the construction phase, why would you have any more than you would have when it's already functioning? Yes, they're doing construction, but they're not smashing panels all over the place. I mean, that's so... So, just make it annual.
At least it was complicated.
Yeah. Just make it annual, and then, I mean, in the event of an extenuating circumstance, however you put that legally, it can be requested to be done every three months.
Other than the hydrocarbons and the cadmium telluride, is there anything else that you would think would be reaching, from these, to be testing for?
The only thing that I would suggest, and I don't know what standard testing would involve, but the kind of elements you might be looking for would be cadmium, lead, copper, or aluminum. I would think those four would be the ones you'd be concerned about. But I don't know what's realistic for, when they do testing like this on water.
We have to make sure that we're allowing the DEP standard for lead in the water, you know, groundwise, or whatever, copper, what's the percentage, I mean?
That would be, that would be the last part of that paragraph, which is said samples exceed the limits established by, like, DEP.
That's, so, that's perfect. Just as it's positive, the lead isn't as a problem.
Exactly. So, do we want to add something in here about a control? Like, do they have to do water testing beforehand?
There, if there's, when I start mentioning, you're taking some upstream...
Yeah.
And downstream, so that the upstream would be the control.
Well, before the project starts though, so that you know what the, what the water, but either, either way, the upstream is still...
Upstream would be the control. Yeah, that, that provides you with the control at the relevant... Upstream of the project point.
So, is everybody okay with an annual water testing?
You can request more if there's a problem.
Everybody else, it's years, good, years, good.
Are they paying for it?
Yeah.
Yes.
I was just going to say, just make sure we're following the...
So, paid for by, paid for by the...
They, they won't do it. Yeah, this is going to be a full-time job for you.
I'm just saying, like...
I did all the stuff they have to do every year.
I have done this for fifteen years. I had solar panels through and through, the solar pump, they'll come and put them in, a lot.
Yeah, this, this is...
I'm going to tell you right now, none of this is going to, I'll be chasing these guys forever. We'll change five company names before I, I'm just saying, I'm just being real...
Hey, I get it.
And I mean, honestly. My first time. You get on, you chase them, it's all.
He's saying goes, I will cut the wires.
I start pulling wires from panels. I put like my house in.
As far as the water, is there gonna be any problem with pile driving well then pylons in? That it could turn the, the well water cloudy? Did that change the, the water?
It seemed to happen at some places, that they knocked so many of them in that it changed the direction of the water flowing into the wells and it messed up the wells.
So it's just a pressure, they do it with decks around here too, if they use the diamond piers.
Yeah, but I don't think they do as many as you're doing in Eastborough.
How would that change the well? How did it, what did it?
From, from all that's, you're putting one here, putting one here, and you're doing that for, for three months straight.
It's only three feet in depth, so how?
Oh, I, I think it will affect it. I think it changes direction on your underground water. Well, I think the, the landowner should have some immediate right to do something. I don't know why. Because it can affect your well.
At, at that point, I would want a hydrologist to tell us that three feet of, of pressure pier drilling is affecting underground water. If that's what you're saying, because I've never.
Well, they're not so sure now how to fleet it, but that isn't something a problem that happened there now.
I went to.
And, and I don't know if it is, I can't prove that, I'm just saying.
I always had a lot of those meetings because it's right near my house.
Yeah.
And I can tell you right now, all their water problems is because, one, they have the worst engineering problem in the entire country, Craft Code. And I can stand by that.
It's the entire country.
They messed up the, they messed up the development behind my house so bad that it just ru- it flooded a whole row of houses out. Um, long story short, that whole stormwater facility, everything is wrong. They didn't follow the plan at all.
And, and who?
Craft never, Glenn Craft never showed up to any of those inspections.
Well, who's the fault there? The township?
No, it's Craft Code.
So are they going back and suing him or has that?
I don't know how it works.
I, I don't know.
I'm sorry, but to me, that's who I'm mad at. But I can just tell you, that's where, that's where they're getting the water problems. They're getting the water problems because.
His allergies.
Yeah, and they moved way too much ground out there.
But they moved ground so quickly that they didn't establish any of the water, nothing got put underground. Nothing got established through water. They moved so quickly, they never did the inspections. They just said, here, here, here. They did it so quickly. They did it on purpose that way. That's why they planted one foot trees. Trust me, I have a big thing about this. I'm taking to the state, um, United State Representative.
Has the app and actually said they're gonna only drill three feet down?
That, that's, the three feet's all required by state code. Building codes, three feet, that's all they're allowed to. If it was gonna be engineered, if it was higher, they would need engineering, like three feet would still be required.
Okay, thanks.
And I missed one other thing. When you started to do deconditioning cost, how do you establish the cost upfront?
Uh, township selects a, um.
I missed that, go ahead.
Yeah, township selects an engineer, I will pay for them to establish the estimated deconditioning cost.
We basically hired a praiser that comes up and says, this is how much it's gonna cost today to take it down.
The township does that, not him.
The township selects the person, they pay for it.
All right, that sounds.
Yeah, and then, and then it goes, then it goes up by a percentage every year.
Yeah, yeah, that I heard.
All right, I mean, I'm gonna do the annual service water for now, and then, I mean, obviously if there's a problem that's created from this, we're gonna do what we can to go after.
We'll make sure it will have to be a generic.
Yeah, right.
That's not me. It's just design.
Okay, the next item, um, considering we're not doing, like, we're not gonna add anything regarding pier cutting. I know one thing about it in regards to the mitigation, um, I think it kind of falls into the same category of, it's not something we need to develop, so.
It's part of the twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I mean, at the end of the day, that's probably the, the good leading factor, so. So this next one, um, is for, with regards to any hard hit results from, um, construction, um, as far as then altering or bringing back, um, subsoil that has adequate water filtration. Um, I had included some language on this, but if any of that had more, um, considering we're gonna be, we're already gonna be requiring that they provide us plans showing that, hey, they're in the phases of construction, this is how solar waters are gonna be managed. I don't really know if this, I think this language is kind of, uh, redundant, you know, keeping that in mind.
I agree with this section.
All right, so pull it out?
Right.
Ryan, take it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I don't know why.
I think, I think what, when, everybody talked about, I think at first I saw this something distinguishable, but didn't think about it now, yeah.
We appreciate your overthinking.
Yeah, and, and I appreciate it.
Don't let the smoke walk over Russell's office. Said, don't let the smoke walk over to Russell's office.
So this has, this has been a team effort, uh, okay. Um, the next item was with regards to, um, acquiring a bond, particularly to roads that will be impacted by truck traffic, particularly because of hauling in the materials. Um, the closest they have found, um, the Erbs County, um, planning condition I referenced, um, in ordinance from Montour County. Um, and in there, I have some language quoted from there, part and part in bold, basically just saying that, um, you know, they impose like some road bonding requirements. So that leads me to believe that we could have such a requirement in this. I don't know that there's some other section of our overall ordinance that allows us to do them or if it's something that we actually have to specify for this particular use.
Yeah, we have to sell it.
Okay.
I would use that this language, it'll transition to that part of the ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To meet, to meet the road bonding requirements of the township.
Yeah.
Okay, I, I could just throw that in under like, you know, make it a subparagraph to, um.
Yeah, I'll, I'll read through it tomorrow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause we talked about that with, um, on another project. Go ahead, sir. Could they ever bring the main fact home to? Yeah. It's so bad.
Five inch, five rubber ones?
No.
Be inch or less than like, uh, okay. So the next one, uh, requirement that batteries storage facility can locate at a certain property. I couldn't find anything on this at all, um, and I hadn't, uh, the kind of language did not, you know, apply onto it one way or the other. Um, I have some proposed language, um, which, I mean, depending on the size of the site, um. Uh, you know, I mean, one, I mean, I guess, I, I have two different, you know, potential provisions. I mean, one is just saying that it's situated at a point which is, you know, previous from all property lines. Again, that, that's kind of, you know, broad, it's, you know. And I don't think necessarily a project is gonna be guaranteed that they can get it dead centrally from all the surrounding property lines of a given parcel. Um, I mean, another thing could just be like, we have some sort of modified setback, because I know there's already gonna be, you know, setback requirements with the project overall. Perhaps just increasing that setback makes sense with this.
Any ordinance I've ever worked with for that particular thing, it gives a set standard feet from the other property line.
Okay.
So they, they're saying that cell storage facility should be, you know, bottomed to a hundred and fifty, two hundred feet from the property line. And they say it should also be about thirty to forty feet from any other structure in case of fire.
Okay.
The code minimum is ten? But I, I don't agree with that. I, I'd say like thirty to forty feet from any other structure, because once those things light up, it's, it's, it's a mistake. I mean, we can make it five hundred feet away from the property line.
Can.
And fifty feet from the structure, and if they can't comply with that, then we can potentially give them relief, right?
This is for accessory elsewhere?
No.
That's, this, this would only.
This is only for the, the big commercial storage cells. Cause a lot of those storage cells for accessory are just low, they're put right in the garage. And that's a lot of, I mean, M E, and, and national. So is five hundred feet off the property line and fifty feet from any other structure sufficient?
It's up to you, you, you can choose, I think we can pretty much choose it as long as it's reasonable.
It looks like a football field and half a way.
But when you think about it, most of the time, those are gonna be up the driveway. They're most of the time up the driveway in the middle where they put the utilities. So a lot of utilities and a lot of storage here, it's, they're, they're right there, so they're usually pretty far, so.
You'd have five hundred foot for any residential.
Yeah, so five hundred feet.
It's already.
And then last one, which is a wild part, again, I could not find anything specific on this, it pertains to language in letter N. Um, and the question is, is there any sort of, um, industry standard to which, um, heat load on neighboring properties can be measured? Couldn't find anything saying of, you know, a type of test.
What do you want to keep?
On a genuine, I just know it was brought up at some point.
If the sun is glaring off of a panel and it's producing more heat on property because of the, I'm just.
It's gonna be impossible to force that.
I, yeah, I've actually, I mean, you'll, you'll get.
Maybe for a heat load on another roof.
Man, unless Ryan.
So is this, is section N only for heat load or is it for glare and heat load?
It was, section N originally existed for the purpose of avoiding direct concentrated solar radiation and glare on producing property on a web. That's, that's what is currently in the ordinance.
Is there anything else in the ordinance about glare outside of that one? During the original meetings, there was a bus driver that had said coming down Sunday Road, you know, if the solar panels were reflecting the light and they were blinding a bus driver coming down. So I think, I think glare studies were required in.
Glare, glare studies are required to the ordinance now.
Yeah.
You need, you need full glare, you can't glare on your other property.
Yeah.
That's, that's a public nuisance violation.
So, I mean, if they're not glaring, they're probably not putting any heat load on the property.
No, no.
Okay, then I'm just gonna remove the language from glare.
Yeah, glare is. We have that now for the solar company that's coming here. And plus it's considered a public nuisance.
But if that is on the list.
You never talked about a top end to, you know, maybe a general background. Is that something you can, like a hiring, to do that amount of, um, the size of the project?
I think that the.
How many manual hours?
I, they didn't align on that at all, and my take on it was their response in regards to setting the maximum amount of, you know, um, acreage to be used for a project was their way of saying, this is how you restrict size, you don't restrict by output. You know, as far as prodding, you know, um, one that produces so much power, but you can say, look, you know, this is the biggest this project can be on a parcel. And, and that, that reminds me, there was one thing I didn't address in this a while back. It was brought up, um, the whole idea of our definition of lot and whatnot.
Yes.
In the township. Um, one thing, um, that we could consider doing is, uh, we could add one sentence to the definition of lot in the ordinance. And just to say, two pieces of land of width, oh, sorry, that two pieces of land which above each other and have their own separate tax parcel IP numbers, even if under common ownership, shall not be considered one lot and shall instead be considered two separate lots.
Yeah, that's my understanding of how it's intended to be.
Oh, I agree with you.
That's how I enforce it. The only other way around that would be to actually own both properties and go through like.
Holiday.
Consolidate, consolidate, and then they are working.
For the fifteen years doing zero, that's on the first. If someone had two pieces of property here and here, and there's a line that splits it, they had a house here, they're not putting accessory structure over here unless this, that, you know, for the principal structure, unless that lot that's being owned.
Yeah.
That's the way I've enforced it for fifteen, I have never.
But maybe adding something isn't something.
No, we can, we can, and you can always go down and double down on it. I'm just saying, I always enforce it that way until I'm challenged. I've never had a judge that hasn't stood next to me in my.
Yeah. I think we should add to it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. The more firepower you have, the better.
Well, I think that that's just clarity for definition for anybody, you know.
That's what I'm saying, that's the more firepower.
Yeah.
If you can make it as clear as possible, there's no, oh, what is your interpretation?
Right.
What's your interpretation, you know what I mean?
So I think the answer is there is no way to limit the size of the facility other than the amount of size of the property and then how much impervious coverage and pour striping they can do.
Hence why you have two.
Which is what Russell's, Russell's assumption was from the beginning, is that putting a limit on it is gonna be considered too restrictive.
Hence why you have two million square feet of area.
Right.
Because you can't limit the size of the building, but you can limit.
Size of the parcel.
Size of what, what they use in the parcel.
Yeah.
And those are all the items.
So do we need to make a motion to accept the ordinance?
So you, you need, you need a motion, uh, to, a motion to recommend to supervisors approval of the solar ordinance.
With the changes that he's gonna make.
With modifications as discussed in accordance with common law for, for its county, county commission date, three, thirteen, twelve.
So what Russell said, do I have a first and a second?
That's why I wrote it down. That way I have it for the minutes.
Right?
Yeah, I still have a question, and you might have covered it again, but I missed it. I'm not that sure.
Hey, turn that hearing gate up.
Yeah. The access road coming in and out. For the fire company, I thought it wanted a certain sized road and a certain surface. I know in other townships they do that. Is that here? I missed that.
Yeah, in a broad sense. Basically, we have a provision in here that says that, you know, on their plans, they will coordinate with emergency personnel, um, you know, for access points, like those are addressed to their satisfaction.
And.
So based on, based on the review, based on the fire marshal's review, he will determine what type of surface he requires and what type of width he requires for his apparatus that is needed for that, that facility.
Okay.
And that will be a condition that we will put in when we do the initial use.
Okay, so it's not a miss, but it would go into that, or is it a miss?
It has it in here.
Oh, okay. See, I missed.
It's in here, but it's not, it's not specific, because every project is different. You want to give the emergency services the ability to say, for this project, this is what we need.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
He lives in Better Home, I call it.
No.
You know better.
All right, so do we have a first and a second?
A second.
All right, first and a second. All in favor? All right. So three or five is a, is a go, right? So.
So three and, three and.
Yeah. Okay, great.
I worked that wind down.
Great job, Justin. It's been now like six months of arduous back and forth.
I appreciate your patience on all of this, you know, it's something that, I think we all want to get, you know, ironed out as, you know, officially as possible, but.
And now that Windsor Township is paid for it, all the other townships in the area can adopt it.
Yeah, you have a legacy.
That's usually what happens, yeah. I'll steal this a couple times.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
Usually happens.
All right. Anything else on the agenda that we need to discuss? There was a concern about the website, which we will talk to Craig about, uh, stating that this meeting was on the nineteenth, which is clearly not, we're all here today. So, uh, we apologize for that. We'll make a note and, I mean, we're gonna try to do better with the website, it's a problem. So.
Well, just to clarify that, my father-in-law.
Can they post whatever Craig says?
Whatever he is told.
Yeah.
It's all he does.
I think the miscommunication was, we were originally gonna have a meeting to go over this on March nineteenth, because we were hoping to adopt it sooner. And I think they put April instead of March. That, that's what I'm assuming happened. Uh, not making excuses, I'm just, that's what may have happened, so I apologize.
And plus he's only. And plus he's only doing it to help.
Right.
He's retired, he's just helping, but he only does what he's told.
Are you next in line to do that then?
No, I will not touch the, I, I do enough for the song to do it and all this, but.
All right, well then, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. A first and.
A second.
And a third and a fourth, all right. Thank you all for coming out, appreciate it.